Are you here just for the enjoyment or? Because if you wanna come see it, I mean, if you've got something to say to us, we'd let you come. Okay. Did we wanna look at her fund and see if there's anything?
Do we have any so we can take care of?
No.
Extension.
Yeah.
She's in the commission, right?
No.
I think there was something in the commissioners too. All the building rent stuff.
Extension contract. So.
It's a contract that we're can't do nothing about.
Is that phones at the extension of your personal phone?
No, it's it's a cell phone through Verizon and through my shows. County, yeah. Mainly.
It's going, is it going up to seven?
She put in another one.
You put it to?
Big, right? You you gotta, you gotta, I thought you added a phone because when you was going.
Several, a couple of years ago, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, cuz it was already up for twenty five. It's not up for this year.
Right.
What's the contractual services you have?
That's to, it goes to Purdue University to provide the, all of the programming pieces.
So that goes directly to Purdue?
It does.
So Dana, since you're here, we get to pick on you and it's not personal. So year to date, you've you've used right at a thousand dollars for your office supplies and you're asking for three thousand dollars next year or something you got planned?
We we do, we provide ahead for that and we get through our business season like April to we inventory up.
Okay.
And then we we'll look at that at the end of the year.
You can, in twenty four, they use three, almost three thousand dollars.
So you just purchase a bunch here between now and?
We try to do the bulk and get the best pricing available.
Obviously, none of ours.
Yeah, we can't pick on you, we can't.
Bet you can try harder and all of it.
There's bigger fish to fry.
Yeah. The only place we got now to go is to cut your salad, you know, and you probably, you probably don't wanna have that fight, so.
I mean, the other thing is to be avail, I want to always be available with the reorganization under extension across the state. I served on a task force for Dean Engel and it is very important to keep that presence as a, especially as a small county.
But the consensus is we're not gonna do any harm.
On this? On this?
Thank you. And now we're just starting to talk.
Or I've got something in there that we need to look at. Right?
I mean, you don't have the EMS funds started, right?
No. That could be a problem, I didn't.
Well, I think when that fund starts, then we just have to.
You have to do additional preparation.
Appropriation, pretty appropriate all of that once it starts, but we can't do it in this.
No, there's nothing here that we can do. Like lockout travel, some things like that, but.
It's, yeah.
The commissioners do what they're gonna do, the dusting, they said. Well, not until January first.
If we decide to do a bulk office supplies or not?
Yeah, but.
But.
Well.
Who's gonna run it?
Yeah, I'd have to run it. And I haven't had a whole lot of luck, but I haven't tried a hundred percent either, but just looking on like Sam's Club to buy a pallet of paper, it's actually more, I guess mostly cuz of the shipping, but more to buy a pallet than it would be just cases as we need them. So in that aspect, bulk is not helping us.
But we were taking all.
Yeah, everybody's office.
Yeah.
Supply and putting in commissioners.
Taking all those lines and if they're exaggerated or they use the money for other things, they taking that away from them.
But we didn't take it away, did we?
No.
No, we haven't. So so we can still work on the process.
Yeah.
We don't, just have to move it to different line. If if it starts coming out of the commissioner's budget, we don't have to let him transfer to another item. You know, if they had five hundred dollars worth of paper, we don't have to let him transfer it to something that we didn't think they needed it for, if that's the way it is. And then we'll have, hopefully, get something working for next year, I mean, as the year goes. Maybe we can't body any cheaper than, I mean, let's face it, online's.
Well, I would be surprised, you know. Somebody could get a pallet of paper down here. We got two, three quarter ton trucks with sheriff's department.
Yeah, that's what I thought, just go into Sam's love and give you.
Get a batch of what they made up there somewhere where they could put a pallet in the back of the truck.
Oh, I have another question. Well, I'll wait, it skipped it. What are the commissioners gonna do with the chase vehicle they bought?
One they got to.
Is that coming back to the county?
It should. To the asset of the commissioners, it's not asset of the ambulance.
Right.
Just like sheriff's trucks are assets of the commissioner.
That's the same way the box is up. I'm gonna guess you're gonna find it goes.
What?
Yeah, I didn't get the impression that they were. I didn't get the impression that they were keeping that.
Yeah, I don't think so either. Brand new vehicle, yeah.
Year old and we're gonna give it away.
You have to state it different than that. You're keeping your contract more affordable. I mean, I I haven't asked the commissioners about it, but I sure haven't seen any indication that it wasn't. But.
And Warren, do you think you can buy paper straight from paper company cheaper and buy it for sale?
I would have thought so, but I haven't yet.
Well, you were talking about people buying from country fines or?
Yeah, I mean, we've we've bought it and had it shipped to Western or Virginia before, Herndon and Virginia.
So, I mean, that might be an option to check and get them.
Yeah, I just reached out to him, emailed today, but it was, I'd waited too long, so.
I mean, the paper company just dropped it at our customers.
Yeah.
Doc. And they.
On this, uh.
Office setting.
Line item. Two thousand forty one. Uh, year to date was if I'm reading that right, three thirty nine.
Got a thousand in assessor office supply? But they spent close to a thousand the two prior years. Most of them do the same thing.
Okay.
They always, they hang on if some emergency comes, they'll dip into the office supplies. If they don't, then they'll fill up their room with office supplies.
They build up, buy it up to the end of the year. I did anyway.
I like with Carolyn a lot for their assessor. The printers are usually the printing supplies is through the purchase, through the lease of the printer?
Some are, but not all of them.
I don't think hers about one at all.
Neither. You know, it's down. Not quite three thousand dollars from the year.
Okay.
Well, that mapping.
Yeah, you think it'd be cheaper with the ability to use drones?
Yeah.
I mean, really?
You see, anybody see anything around with? Both or three?
I could do math, well, I thought it was.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and jump four or five.
Are we going to five? What are we doing here? Well, I don't know. Or have accessory assessments. Ninety. I I jumped the same place as you. I jumped. It's just. It's up like two point four.
It just raises.
Yeah.
You never had a cell phone before?
Actually, it's my personal one.
But we put it in for six hundred.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, added in.
Is that enough? Yeah, I bet they were seven and they want a cell phone.
Yeah, about fifty dollars to you.
Well, do you not, I don't see, you don't have your.
Yeah, you guys did my.
You don't have your laptops in here you were talking about? Not seeing.
Computer replacement is, that's commissioners and Kim Cap, they have a line.
Okay. Thirty five. Sixteen auditor meeting. That's what she gets for going to forty plus meetings a year. When she could be at home. Yeah. Close every night when she's on the computer.
Do we motion that or we just do it?
No, we just do it if anybody's in favor.
I'm in favor of four thousand.
I just, I just had a wild hair today.
A lot, I'm sixteen.
Yeah. Yeah. I just got to thinking about it today when I was looking through this and she spends a lot of.
Hour on that. A lot of, just look when the emails are sent.
Yeah, exactly. Or once in a while email her and say, please don't look at this till Monday.
Or please turn your phone off and go to bed.
Yeah.
Get an email at ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night.
Yeah, she has a lot.
Has to get done somehow.
I agree to that, everybody.
I agree too. Was it four? Yeah, I think four.
It's just a lot of.
We don't wanna make them bad and get her quit.
That doesn't get thanked often enough.
What's the tax maps?
Flat maps.
Says tax maps. Maybe it's just, it's.
Yes, that's we plant.
Isn't there a new map coming out this year?
Uh, we got, no, not the nine one one maps that I know of, we got new books.
Yeah. And that's.
The Davis Martin books.
Oh, you're zero.
Okay.
I thought we'd have to pay a lot more for them, but okay, so, um, the business in Davis County really took the lead on it and we just bought, hmm, hundred, I think.
So the the deputy surveyor, is that, is that Kyle?
Yeah.
That comes out of your budget?
It hasn't before. So this fund really wasn't being used and he's doing all our mapping.
I understand that, you know, just, that's why I questioned, so Kyle comes out three spots?
It will now, yeah, this next year.
So who's?
Carolyn covered.
Carolyn covered fifteen. Yours makes twenty two. Then what's the surveyor got budget for the rest of it?
Their friends.
I don't even waste salary. I'm just rambling. Eric seventeen and twenty. Thirteen thousand five ten.
Yeah.
What would be the other?
Carolyn was fifteen thousand.
And then seven. That's fitting in more than the surveyor.
It's thirty.
Seven.
Thirty five. Yeah.
Very close.
Yeah, but he's technically not. See that, that's why I said last year, we need a mapping department. We're almost there.
He's not only doing mapping, man, he like.
I know, but you, what was Carolyn's?
Fifteen thousand.
You get out of. Fifteens and then do the other stuff. Or they won't do the other stuff where it is like. I ain't right. We're up here, he knows he's gotta make all three people happy to. That job. Thirty five, five one seven. Yeah.
Recorder too, so I mean, he's.
I've done the office chairs, Michelle.
Did, yeah.
Circle, circle over.
Hey, this is what I got marked, I got all the way down to the, back down to the cell phone, okay? Year to date was nine hundred, nine hundred fifty one dollars forty two cents. She has boasted eleven hundred. Asked for twenty five hundred, but budgeted eleven. Would that eleven hundred be the same amount for the next three months?
It's about fifty dollars a month. Well, she probably has more, she probably has some wifi on hers. And close.
Would be eleven, it would be the eleven hundred. That, that's, that's correct, but it would be around eleven. And the travel court?
Ninety one dollars a month, almost ninety two.
Like travel court is just one of them things they don't know if they're using or not, isn't it?
Yeah, until they have to do it.
So we're gonna budget two thousand dollars, we want to use six eighty eight last year or this year. Use fifteen hundred. Okay, you're seeing actual in twenty twenty four. Okay. It's I thought that one.
Now her equipment repair, there's one if you wanna talk about something.
What?
The equipment repair, she's just two hundred fifty five dollars or it's twenty five hundred dollars requested.
I'd say, I think too many meetings I do, I think.
I know, I'm trying to.
Organisation serves at the same time. Yeah, but that's.
I feel like she got some.
It's more trial. More with you know.
I feel like she got something, she's using that on. But she's got her recorder systems and everything, she's gotta keep ticking.
Well, she did tell me oh, a couple of weeks ago, that new recorder system they just bought is needs some part and they can't get the part and the equipment's now out of date.
Oh, we're going.
I know.
Spots.
And it's not looking good, but she's not gonna have to buy a whole new system. So I haven't talked to her in about two weeks to see if if they bought it straight now, but they were having to use like recorders again, like these things, you know, little desk reporters. So that's, I mean, it was catastrophic failure, they said.
The, uh, furniture and equipment. Four hundred twenty dollars so far this year, she's got budgeted for six thousand.
I think, again, I think that was to do with some of the remodel, wasn't it?
They would tell.
Which still hasn't happened for this year, so then it gets ran to next year.
But if she needed to use, buy her recording equipment, that money could be used out that too, correct? They can shift it.
Yeah, instead of the equipment.
Well, if she knows what she's doing before the end of the year, she can use it out of here. For this year, we just transferred.
That's what she needs to do, Michelle.
And then, then we still.
Does there's five thousand there and?
Then we still have six thousand for whenever her remodel happens, she upgrades furniture.
Like how she just dolled some jury chair? And what she needs.
New wooden benches?
I think, I think some of the benches was something.
Prosecutor tables, I think.
Something, things in the corners and stuff, I think's what it was.
Yeah, jury chairs are nice.
I mean, six thousand dollars isn't a lot for.
She's, she's got some money to play with on her quarter, she needs it, she needs to get.
Yeah, seems like it's fifteen thousand dollars last time she bought it.
Well, she got five of it this year.
Yeah.
Six next year, there's eleven of it, I mean, that takes the sting out of everything. Real quick.
Well, we're not like a much head.
No, but if we can, if she'll use that money this year.
Yeah, exactly.
Seeing this next year with it.
Yeah.
It sure softens the blow a little bit.
Yeah.
I'd be creative here.
I don't understand the, uh, GOA and the cost of there's no one who used.
Uh, let's see what that fund balances, have they even used any?
Hey, Georgia.
There's nothing we can do with it.
No.
No. It has to stay there.
We don't have a cost of pulling in, do we?
Think they have to pay somebody.
I just see it all these billboards.
Yeah.
Not volunteering for nothing.
Yeah, there's a little over three thousand in that fund right now, but.
I think if something, somebody needs it, they have to pay somebody, I think, you know.
What are we gonna do? Like a public defender piece, that's like three hundred thousand a year.
Yeah.
Scary.
Yeah. Can we not take anyhow that cost of? No.
Well, always. She's gonna version about something. Then just.
She's talking about jury trials, she's got in here ten thousand dollars, she would, she knew that she was gonna have another jury trial before the end of this year. So she'll be right at the ballpark anyway.
Yeah, it was in October.
Well, that jury trial fund, drink fee.
Yeah.
Almost has nothing in it. So she's budgeted ten thousand, but she can only spend what is in there.
Yeah.
Uh.
It has nothing in there, that's what she was gonna come back as. I mean.
This is below the integrity.
A lot of, a lot of them I've been getting. Yes, seven before that. Which I guess saves us a bunch of money.
Yeah.
Last page you're looking for me, I'm also glad you got an extra page.
I'm that player. Worked. Visiting like went up point eight percent.
Is that wages or was that?
I don't even come to wages, doesn't. I bet, uh, four percent. I think it was wages.
Two and a half percent, I mean. Sure, it's a pretty tight ship. It's a non-election year.
Mm-hmm.
So that, I observed.
Next year will be.
Didn't she, once she get into computers?
Yeah, it cannot serve perpetuation this year.
Yeah, there will be.
That's gonna come out, clerk fight, it comes out of the election.
Yeah, right. You have election next page. Wonder if we're going to all take the ballot.
That jury fund, by the way, has fifteen hundred dollars in that, so.
With crushed fingers.
Yeah, that they get called off.
I didn't. Blow that cuz it's an election.
Thirty four thousand?
The election extends. Is that forty? Five thousand. Either way. Because we've got to have.
Yeah, next year is election.
Yeah, you have to bear with last election year.
Uh, one four. Six years, nine thousand dollars. That wasn't a thousand, no.
Voting machine.
There was no voting machine release on the five. Well, there's no number across it.
Probably comes out.
I, I, I jumped.
When I was clerk.
I jumped.
We got leasing, it was costing us twenty thousand dollars in election year.
Well, when it's right here, we next paid over the voting machine lease, four thousand seven hundred dollars.
That's a maintenance agreement.
That's maintenance agreement, probably.
But it doesn't.
Yeah, I can probably.
Have one for maintenance and then you have voting machine lease, twelve thousand seven hundred dollars.
And they start least? Did they start leasing the electronic ones? The ADA compliance?
Yeah, but they do have a fee on that, but I don't think it's didn't play with that.
Every polling place it now has a.
What's your license plate on, your license on, you know, and reads it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the twelve thousand seven hundred dollars?
I can't tell you which one it is.
And I can't tell you what it costs now either.
But it's only at the thousand dollars from twenty four. So.
She's not wasting much if she's wasting any.
And and the food's up four hundred dollars of that.
No need for feeding from the election.
Well, three times, yeah.
You're approaching, that's all grand for here.
Yeah, that's. Don't you can do that?
Or the eight.
Or the corner.
Only increase was the autopsy in labs cuz now we have to pay if it's done out of county also.
But his is only. Yeah, and they're getting autopsy.
Yeah, and they're getting autopsies for our degree.
I don't like there anything we can do there.
Yeah, obvious.
Have you heard anything about the health insurance?
No, still haven't yet.
Where do you keep maintenance contracts on the show? Where do they keep maintenance contracts on?
Hmm.
Generator unless it's got its own line item.
Oh, I have elevator.
Generator where?
Forage grounds.
Went from a thousand to five thousand.
The jails budget?
Jails got it wrong, yeah.
But is it in their budget or commissions?
I don't remember. I think, I think it's in the jail budget.
Okay. How long do we have to pay that prosecutor rent? We gotta get Nate and him out there though, boy. And we don't have a place but.
Now we have um. H VAC. Maintenance contract on the prosecutor's office. And courthouse.
That's what that five thousand is?
Yeah.
What about the other part, the maintenance for repairs, same five thousand?
Uh, we can have the water repairs.
That's just anything.
This year.
Right?
Yeah, any repairs to.
Any, anything to any other building.
Yeah, we've already used forty-one hundred already. So most likely have to transfer from somewhere else. Be in finish off the year.
So. Did they come up for a place for? Nate?
Oh. Last I heard, the recycling center building, looking at constructing. Temporary offices in there, but.
There's already office in there.
Yeah, but it's kind of closet.
Yeah. Too small for. It's about eighty feet long. I mean, it does have P T A. So he didn't go in there. He's gonna extend the wall, I think.
Mm-hmm.
How long do we have?
We get that done cheaper than eighty-five hu- eighty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, really.
Well, our. I say, when's our contract up for that building?
There is no.
It's monthly now.
Oh, okay. And we still have the one at Laguardia's. Certainly the time.
Yeah, two years now.
Two years.
We could start today with plans. We wouldn't have that down to two year.
Uh?
We could start today and we wouldn't have that building the way we're ready in two years.
Well, if they just turn a couple offices in, they.
Yeah, I was just talking about community corrections.
Yeah, no, I. No, I was just thinking about getting Nate out of that building.
Too short to make it two stories.
We wouldn't have to pay eighty-five hundred dollars.
No.
But they're, they're just a month to months on that, so at whatever point. I don't know. Last time I talked to. Talked to him is talking about. Well, I think maybe three offices, wasn't it? I mean. Two rooms for the surveyor and a room for.
H R.
H R. In there, which shouldn't be.
So why are we?
Crazy expensive.
You already took it out. The matrix is taken out, right?
Mm-hmm. Let me get there.
You'd be great.
What are we taking out?
Because the matrix from right.
Yeah, I put down an I T contract services.
Okay, so it's sixty thousand.
And what you do eight deeper than.
Fourteen thousand, sixty thousand?
No, let's see.
Yeah, but I'm saying, can't write that thing for eighteen per.
Well, we had. That's just over just, that wasn't.
And.
For the year.
At forty-four, right about it, forty-four five.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, that's seventy-eight hundred and. Um. Cyber security was part of it too on the previous page, sixty-one.
I've seen that.
So lessen that one too, so.
Seven, eight dollars and thirty-three. And whose cell phone comes out of commissioners?
Hmm, H R.
Two different areas in the track service, just one.
Um, we're there for the jail too.
Oh.
Who else?
What?
Yeah. Is it? courthouse and the jail, courthouse come here. I don't know why, that's just.
Do they have line item in theirs for trash service?
Hmm. I don't think so.
Are they in the general with the courthouse? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, he has the utilities, but he doesn't have a. Specific. Line from. Trash.
Little part-time custodian, Michelle, is that?
That was just made when we had that fill-in. Fill-in custodian. Between um. Brittany and.
It's zeroed out.
Yeah.
Then you use twenty-five hundred dollars. On your. Janitorial supplies and you got budget sixty-five thousand.
Um.
There's something that we don't.
Well.
Twenty-four was six thousand, I mean fifty-nine twenty.
Wow.
That would change.
Yeah, I know Missy's really, she's.
True.
Yeah, really penny pinching, so. Um. I think it could be lessened. Do you know of anything?
We drive it down to four thousand, that'd be good.
Bingo.
There's sixty-five hundred.
Yeah.
That's another hit my head too.
We can see how it goes.
Alright.
I mean, since. The hardware stores right here in town, you could get some of that stuff bulk from Sam's.
No hardware store.
Well, they're buying all the supplies they could up there and help announce, so they're not business of very important.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't even buying as much as I could have. But. But yeah, I've been getting paper towels from Sam's and. And a lot of stuff.
Are they delivering?
Yeah, they do, yeah. We do pay for the prime or whatever their thing.
We just started to. Having delivery at the post.
Hmm, yeah.
From Sam's.
Hmm.
Saving a lot. Free delivery.
Sam's Bradley? Oh, no step.
Wow.
Now, the trash service, is that for the whole, every building or is that just for here?
Hmm, it sits back there, so probably health department and prosecutor and us.
Is the uh, was the jail.
Hmm.
I guess my question was, we didn't pay for dumpster over prosecutor's office out of this budget.
No, I don't know what she did with her trash.
Okay.
Most part of it, most of it couldn't be dumped in the trash probably.
Hmm.
I got shredding service that has to.
On that uh.
Yes.
On that elevator contract, is that including the ten year that's gonna be coming up on that? They have a ten-year inspection on the elevator.
No, I didn't know.
Separate it?
No, I didn't know about it.
Okay, that's gonna be a lot more.
Might get caught on that visual.
Yeah, probably. We have a contract with Oracle that they come twice a year just for. Preventative checking out maintenance.
When's the ten year up?
I don't know. I don't remember when the elevator was put in. I know it's been a, at least ten years.
Probably.
Out of date.
That's what paid Oracle did, that she.
Ask them what it, what the ten years gonna.
Yeah, we need to contact them pretty soon for the. To get the license renewed anyway.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about is the life, the, the inspection for the license release.
You have to do that yearly, like a regular.
Ten year also.
Yeah.
That's really up there.
Okay. Good news.
Really, resold cable.
And the school just had theirs done, whatever they charge them, probably about the same as what they charge us here. Same elevator.
Oh.
The school here has an elevator?
Mm-hmm, all schools do.
Where are they?
Even Laguardia. They have to.
Wonder where's that?
Show the project character.
Yeah.
Right, and so I have to carry doors on the left.
Where would Laguardia speak?
Hmm.
So go by this on the backside of the gym, like you're going down to this junior high.
Oh, really?
Up the wood shop.
Well, I went up in.
It goes schools.
Stairs in the rain a lot of times on pretzels.
Yeah, I've never seen it, learned it from anybody.
It's in the wheelchair though.
You could tell how much I guess I'm at the schools.
So all the.
I was young, but I still thought that I could base plant.
So all the U P stuff could handle this?
The salaries, yeah.
There's a little time.
There's one great big one on the top of the U P stuff. Even the director.
Is he gonna pay rent out there?
They're working, first from what I heard, yeah. When are we supposed to meet with the insurance?
Hmm. I know, H R was getting. Like demographic, employee demographic info ready. Send to the. Our agent. I don't know when they expect it. I would say middle or end of October. Earliest.
And even though we take all these hours.
I haven't even get how many hours she puts in.
Now, we still know what number we're.
Hmm, supposed to be. Twenty-nine point five.
Nine sixty. It was a ninety-seven, nine sixty-three? Or seven seventy, eleven thousand five oh one. Great territory.
That's what, what you're saying.
Seven hundred and eleven, five oh one salaries, from the director down. Seven one one, all the five oh one.
Thank God, thank God.
One thousand dash twelve. Top of the page.
The one in edit?
Hmm.
Edit down here.
That's still, I want, I know, you know.
It better be at least that.
Not third, no.
Yeah, right. Still gotta pay. We've still gotta pay it whether we cut it or not. That's gonna be at least.
Still can't.
At least that, maybe well, yeah.
Probably at least eight sixty-two.
So, yeah, I didn't.
Health insurance?
That's fifteen percent.
I still can't understand why. So hypothetically, us, Lawrence County, Orange County can't go together and get a group plan. I just don't understand. It just. The state ought to come out and help, help that banner, put us in regions and say, you guys have the ability to. Get close by this region as planned, and then you each break off your own numbers, or your employees.
I just know what I pay and what. It's paid here.
Yeah, the employees only. Pay ten percent premium and.
I pay twenty.
Have a, let's say, thousand dollar deductible.
Sure.
Commissioners.
How much does it pay not for health insurance?
Just taking out my check. I don't know the exact amount, but it's quite a bit.
I know cream's terrible.
I'm less than cream.
Ah.
Mine is lighter than mine's more than cream.
Is it really?
Yeah.
It's terrible.
It's still forty percent is not uncommon.
Yeah.
No. I mean.
You mean like an eighty? That's what they all owe them.
Where's the ring too?
No. Yeah, but they're not all making seventeen dollars an hour. Yeah, right. I mean, that's why we have some of the people that's working, because they understand they're not hitting the hours, but they aren't paying for the insurance. Yeah.
Give it to.
I understand. So. The general consensus has been that if we go raise it to twenty percent. And then if you don't turn around and put that number back on the wages. You lose several employees.
Don't think highway department can lose anymore than down to seven, I think.
Yeah. If, if we ever. When we keep getting closer to. Getting the numbers where they ought to be, I think, but if we ever get. The hourly wage close to what it ought to be, then we can change what we do with insurance, but.
I wonder if our hourly wages are.
Yeah.
We're in ballpark though.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. We keep getting closer, but we still have. Too many people that really aren't where they ought to be.
Here in courthouse, each, each office has a book. That has. Salary of every county in the state for their office. And last I knew. Martin County was lower than any of them in it. On any category.
Yeah, I think Michelle makes what a deputy makes in Martin County, in Tuscan.
Yeah. Assistant will go to you, makes more than I do.
Really?
Yeah. Boy, now why are the worry one over there?
Hmm.
You're thinking about leaving, are you? Assistant over there is leaving.
Are you telling us something?
That's a general question here.
About it, but no.
Leaving January first. Moving in. Bye.
Did they lose somebody? In city?
Barb's retired.
Yeah, who is?
Barb. Girl's assistant, she's retired.
Oh. The uh. I could see them tight enough until there she might not.
I, too, they're, they're the same as.
Yeah, their dollars are tight too, yeah.
Three thousand and twenty-four point two four. Something out here.
Where you at?
Um, not paid.
Eight thirty-two. Forty-nine.
Boy.
We got the maintenance cost there. Another lose from there.
Got zero dollars used. Got zero dollars used. Twenty five was, uh, budgeted, but yeah, I don't want that.
Let me see what in twenty three, what we paid on there.
Yeah, twenty three, twenty three.
I guess it's more of a question, what's it for?
Yeah, I wanna look.
What we paid for it.
No, I'm, what's for?
I mean. And we just got all these mysterious contracts.
It's like with that X soft contract.
X soft and Harris contract boat.
Well, we thought we were going.
Harris went way down.
Well, we thought we were going with X soft this year for financials and they're not done with it yet.
Ninety seven thousand?
Yeah. Yeah. It's the, they do our property tax software too, so we were paying forty thousand dollars for property tax software. And it would have been forty ish. I don't remember how much for the financials.
But they're not ready, you say?
No.
They show what is ever needed.
Yes.
No, there's no generator here.
Would that generator be both? There's not none here.
Didn't use any of Russia Europe?
That's the fairgrounds that the highway. Supposed to, um. Upkeep, but they haven't had it.
Department has the generator.
Yeah, but the highway, they're paying, supposed to be paying the highway to.
Upkeep it.
Do a monthly maintenance. So this generator maintenance here is for the fairgrounds.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, there's another.
Generator here, but it never did work. Make sure play twenty five thousand for it. Well, they're big enough around the building.
Pass the generator just the maintenance of the fairgrounds. Why would that not fall into there?
What?
Generator should fall in the general maintenance of the fairground.
They use the, the general maintenance at the fairgrounds for other things. I don't know, you know, can.
I, I believe the history had something to do with it being the emergencies. That was before me, but that was out, it would be so long to me.
But my question, why can the generator not be included in that maintenance line item there? We should do away with that line item. Here's, is my question.
It, the, the reason is because this part is for the general. Good of the community instead of. People looking at it saying, hey, this is to help run the fairgrounds, which it's not to help run the fairgrounds. Who, who's ever money put it in? Or emergency services.
Does that generator exercise every week?
No, I don't think every week.
Every month.
Andy has started helping with that now, I believe. And you're in one.
It was supposed to be every month.
At one point, I believe there was a contract with the individual to do that, then the highway department took it over. And I think one of the challenges was when something does happen, the highway department is out doing. The highways and cleaning and doing those kind of things. And then that was, you know, after, um, by the ways.
We used to pay M M.
Mm-hmm, not for that, that's for the gym. That's the only one I do.
No, oh, I think we paid M M back several years ago. It was, no.
Only one I ever did was the gym.
Okay. Individuals safe, not fair. Okay. Why was it the wedding against fairgrounds? I mean, it was down that with no phone. That was a long time ago. Oh, that was awful. I asked, I asked the superintendent a while back. I didn't probably get a real solid answer on how often they're showing up. It might be something the commissioner will look at.
It used to be every Monday.
Yeah.
It used to be when the individual was in charge of it, uh, with everything.
They should cycle at least once a week. If it don't, that iron in that generator will lock up and it won't be any.
That's what I thought. If they don't kick on every week. That's so good.
Me out on the shift to D M S, they're in that building.
No, no.
It's a totally different.
No, it's another. They're still the ones in charge of emergency management, and that's the emergency building.
Yeah.
And so it's the commissioners and.
I'll call Andy tomorrow, see what he.
My thought is that we're short handed, the highway department, they shouldn't be able to mess around with generators when they're full handed. That's my thoughts.
If E M, if emergency management's willing to pick it up, then the commissioner should shift that money to them. And.
Two thousand dollars to be a private service, yeah, but it has to be serviced twice a year. So. That's not a bad price. I mean. I take one of my trucks to Evansville to have service, and it's two thousand dollars, so.
Not cheap.
Are we doing anything here? Our clock keeps ticking.
Asking questions, which we've already asked, I guess, to be very good.
I mean, we're still on schedule. My wife said she'd see me at ten o'clock.
Okay. I'm down to, uh.
Plus eight.
It would be forty nine. Back right back to the repairs again, selling repairs, which were already passed back here. On the same thing, and but this one's at fifty thousand dollars.
Again, this is not general fund and, and advisors had us trying to switch a bunch of stuff coming out of here.
To.
Instead of all the general fund.
Yeah, okay, I, I do remember that. To pull it out of here instead of the general.
Yeah. It's just that we have a tendency always small, we'll just pull it out of the general fund. It needs to be coming here.
Okay.
And then we're replacing all these computers next year?
Uh, we probably do have more different place, but.
A lot of them was this year.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
I don't even know.
Twenty thousand for next year.
I'll only spend eighteen thousand dollars this year on computers.
But the hundred twenty, that's.
Well, that's in case they don't do ice poking, expecting the server to be done this year. But that's what this money would be for is if the server wasn't done. Cause it's been in there the last. Well, it was in there last year too. No. But we don't. We don't have it yet.
It's got three hundred and seventy six thousand.
Yeah.
So if it happens this year, they're probably ending up money there next year anyhow, but. Anyhow, that's what that is.
There's no way you can move that restricted fund of the on page ninety seven at all, is it? That's totally.
Yeah, it's pretty much locked.
Money's locked in there that nobody can use.
Yeah.
What can it be used for?
Rehab, recreation, uh. Education.
Things like that. For the juveniles, when they go to rehab.
Probably somehow drug.
I mean, cause that's, that was one of those we kept falling short on.
Well, probably not when they, we send them to rehab, probably not that line. I don't know though.
I think it's just gonna keep building up every year.
Need to find a way to use that, so.
Well.
Probation stuff.
So it's only, it only has twenty one thousand eight hundred forty five.
Well, the restricted probably, I mean unrestricted.
What we can do with the restricted.
Seven, sorry.
What can we, uh?
We can't do, I mean, there's a communications buyers are very bored, J rack, I think, is over it, so they have to come up with some plan and.
Over this, hope you already restricted fund.
Then we need to ask, ask them to general question, what can we use it on?
Yeah.
And where can we use this? Cause it's just sitting there.
Or if they'll let us invest it.
Yeah, it's invested with just. Regular.
Okay.
Checking account money. But.
She never hit me on seven point entry.
Well, I, I talked to her about it, um. No, I didn't get back with her, but.
Maybe she'll just come talk to us next month.
Had a.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't have a followed up with her, but it sounded promising.
Yeah, so.
From the Indiana fund. Yeah, she seems to be getting more comfortable. I, I told her some people to talk to, but I mean.
That Indiana front, you can't beat that. And now it's going down because.
No, cause you can, you can call up tonight and have it pulled tomorrow.
Yeah, most they call by four o'clock, it's seven by four o'clock.
I mean, she didn't say she's doing it, but at least she didn't say she wouldn't do it.
Yeah, we talked again about it after that, I think.
Think she's.
She will, yeah.
Yeah, I tried to talk her into just, you know, just put some of it, let's. Let's see where we go, but.
Yeah, she's got, I looked up before the meeting, um. She's got seven million with German American and a market smart is what it's called. It's getting three point five eight percent. It's yielded to date this year, hundred and eighty two thousand five hundred and forty one dollars, fourteen cents.
Did she take that number up? I feel like that's higher than what it's been, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's been. And she did that account last year.
Yeah, but that meant.
Um, yeah, she hasn't changed. She got two CDs. Ones with Crane. And she couldn't remember the rate when I text her, cause didn't give her any notice.
Best rate going into county right now is Martin County credit union. I mean, they, they have the best.
Yeah, they couldn't.
They're, they have a five month, they have a. Uh, twelve month and twenty four month, and all of them are good.
But she can do two fifty.
There was, yeah, there was a maximum there and I don't, it may have been like.
Stuff being F D I said, sure. And the max is two fifty. Do two fifty and there, nothing else, cause they, they invest the money back into the people of the county.
How much is that? Seven mill German American, what's the percentage?
Three point five eight. Our regular checkings, two point one five.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So they're. treating us a lot better there. Yeah, it used to be zero, zero, yeah.
But market smart. It all goes to the general fund, but the, the checking is kind of split over about. Eight different funds, like Highway gets some and, uh, recessment. Of.
And they setting up a board of finance meeting there.
We haven't yet, but Dave's been out of town, so, yeah, we're going to when he gets back. This board of finance has to be the one to. Change where the interest goes to. She has C D with German American that's gonna be due on ten four, so what, next week? Um, that's getting four point one six percent, right?
That'd be this week.
Yeah. So.
The next runaround, he won't get that much.
No, it's not that.
It's not, that's it though.
It's three point eight at. At German American right now, that's for a twelve month.
Martin County co-op's still about four.
Mm-hmm.
It's ready, so.
Be nice to go with Martin County co-op, which then be good.
That's where we changed all of ours.
And I looked up at Dresden Vienna. Yeah, daily yield is four point one three.
Let it close to Martin County.
They're based on pride. Since it's fed with lower interest rates, it'll adjust that.
They're doing that again, probably won't.
Let's do it.
Every little bit helps.
Seven point one percent's a lot of money.
Yeah, that's. That's why she had to go. She hadn't banked with Crane Credit Union before, but. There's just like three or four points higher, so it was, it's a big difference from German American to Crane, so.
And you know what, Crane can do it, German American couldn't.
Yeah.
So what paid you on now? Somebody's got some pages moved.
I'm only, I'm only thirteen, but I didn't even skip that one.
You're on what? Hello, Paige?
Cancel.
We're all zeroed out. Emergency here, is that right?
Yeah. E M A.
Something purchased in twenty four on line four thousand twenty one.
What page you going, what one?
Page one sixty nine.
What's that?
There's riverboat, riverboat, red new sharing.
Are you a counselor?
Yeah.
It's M log.
Going around.
Direction.
It's like, where we going?
Oh, four thousand twenty one land?
Yeah.
Eighteen.
Yeah, I was thinking about it.
What do we buy in eighteen thousand? I mean, in twenty four, I don't remember.
Uh, I think it was.
Oh, what about the land behind the?
No, it's, this is, it was this little parcel over here in the parking lot, wasn't it?
No, that was a grant, that was a, that tribal grant.
Yeah, what about that land behind the jail, that law?
No, that was like before I got here in twenty two. Um, this is for the old national building, part of the. Uh, purchase of that, we had to pay like. Real thirties or.
Okay.
Do a down payment.
Sidewalk fee.
Yeah. Yeah, and that wasn't even all, I think part of it, I think came out of team chat too, I think.
Where you at?
On a railway. Far, far, far away. I was the twelve. I'm on the land island of Jim.
I said, I thought we were going this way, but he went back that way.
Pick up your coke and let's start over.
On the E M S, everybody, let's all get to the same page. Page is twenty two, two twenty four, you have to write in border. Let's everybody get.
What tab? I'm down to about sixteen already. We're at twelve.
E M S. Yeah, I'll say Andy's.
Say there's really nothing extra there, don't look to me like.
The utilities might be the only change if this.
His utilities. His utilities.
Yeah, but he might balance some of that out of with rent or something, as a new, new contract with the, whoever lands the ambulance situation.
I don't see nothing that a lot of them.
Try extension. Flipping pages to help.
And there's really nothing here either. That's there.
She could have went up there and missed, did she?
Now, they had to cut because of. Uh, off the governor did tell.
It's just a fifteen, about fifteen.
We're just catching up with you.
We had the. In twenty four, we had on the bridge inspection, three thousand point one one, okay, and twenty four is eighty two thousand dollars. Twenty five is sixteen thousand dollars, where eighty two thousand dollars involved with the bridges that being built now.
Shouldn't have been in, shouldn't have been in the inspection.
Cause then why are we at a hundred thousand dollars? If we only use sixteen thousand dollars this year.
I don't know, but Teresa was on here, she said I could call her with questions, I don't know. I can try to look it up, but she.
Isn't the fun we get from.
But it lowers the ones we do. If we get this enough little dot taken care of here, move this dot over.
Okay, sorry, I got you on speaker, can you hear me?
Bridge inspections.
Yeah, they're asking about bridge inspections. Yeah, budget a hundred thousand, twenty four spent eighty two thousand. And this year so far sixteen thousand.
So uh, this year was the last end of the bridge inspection for, as we do a. It was twenty one through twenty four, so next year. Is the beginning of a new, new one, so they have to go and do every bridge inspection again, cause it's a new company. So it's in cycles and that's, that state. You know mandated, and that's reimbursable.
Oh, yeah, I forgot that. Is it?
Seventy five, twenty five, I believe.
Are we seventy five or that?
They're the seventy five, right? We get seventy five back, okay.
That's good. Any other questions while I sit there?
No, I'm looking at the rest of the inspection.
Then some of them embraces the license to drive over downward one, they get.
I don't see any of them.
That's all.
Okay, thank you, Teresa.
Oh, they paid them their own fresh service too, twenty three hundred dollars. A year, twenty three hundred.
They said a month, but.
Get all over on your own surface. It is all one service. It is all one company.
It is, yeah.
Probably uses somebody else, but.
Also, what you're saying Jim, or sharing, is we need a contract for trash.
Yeah.
All the.
Yeah.
Dumpsters.
Yes. If we got two or three dumps we're paying for, we need to get one company to do them all. I would think they'd give you a better price if you did.
Well, they bid out rock, what can they bid out of dumpster ship? The question for them tomorrow, right?
You coming to ask me?
I might, I got it.
Zoom in.
Come on, zoom in, I can't get to connect, I give up, I'll zoom in.
Well, probably cause.
Half sixteen.
I think the time soon you tried to get in, we started late or something. So now I have to let everybody in.
So sixteen is up twenty four percent.
We adjusting down that bridge.
No.
No, that's. It starts over a new cycle where they had to do all the bridge inspections.
And the state reimburses seventy five percent.
Seventy five, twenty five. We'll get some of it back.
Didn't we move the? Did we not move or pull out that uh, one thousand?
Minutes.
I think we should, we can keep him by heart, but.
Well, why can't it be the twenty one, seven, seven eighty one instead of fifty eight?
Is that what they paid us this year?
They haven't paid any.
They ain't paid anything this year, cause they can't.
They should have paid something.
Well, that's what, two weeks at a time or whatever they.
That we have.
Four thousand eight hundred and eighty two dollars.
It's not, it's not.
Two pages back. Five lines down. One thousand eighteen.
But that's the old out.
Yeah, yeah, she's paying all, they're paying it from general fund, all of it. Next year.
Wonder why?
I don't know.
Don't think I have enough money left.
Do what it is, twenty one hundred. Hundred and thirty seven thousand. They're in twelfth. Right now.
The beginning balance was ninety eight thousand, so they're not using. Out of that for whatever reason.
Yeah, how about this? Yeah, there's really no salaries out of it since they can't hire that person, and then probably they try to spend out a general fund out of it, imagine. These other supplies and things. Probably what I. Probably would do if I was in there, she's.
So the topic on the table is to cut the probation officer, can't seem to keep filled. Is that the way I'm understanding everything?
There's two, there's also that case manager, which they got zeroed out anyway.
And we've also got.
Thirty six, six ninety two is the same as the probation officer, it's thirty six, six ninety two. And one of them they zeroed out, well, I guess they both, they zeroed them both out.
We've also got the chief. Stipend in there. That we always kept.
And it wasn't on salary and wage ordinance separately.
It's something the state allows, and a lot of people do it, but the state sets their salary.
Well, they got more money than we do.
They set their salary, but we can sit there and give the. Judge, the prosecutor. Apparently the chief. More money if we think the state's not paying them enough.
I think that this chief, it was. It was a must do if they supervise one of three. Judge and prosecutor was may. May pay them. I don't have those papers with me, but.
Yeah, I remember we went through all that, she had a big, big list of papers.
I'm assuming it was, cause.
We're gonna keep it at fifty eight thousand?
I'll say it again, Jim.
Are we gonna keep that at the fifty eight thousand, or are we gonna go to, for the twenty one? Seven eighty one? Just make it same as last year.
Why did they jump it? That's a request, why, what was her forty thousand dollars?
Cause whatever, she could hire another full-time employee.
Well, keep, we wanted to train, yeah, the one, wasn't it?
Yeah, and the other ones.
That was the court reporters.
No, that's in the courtroom, that's why I'm trying to.
They all boarded together and everything.
Yeah, this was the forty thousand jump, because they were paying the difference as supplemental. The two pages back, so they're not paying any of that next year.
So that's where it came from. Is that what you're saying? Instead of it coming out of two, two accounts, it's just coming out of me?
And I don't, she said we could cut somebody.
If anything, if she was gonna come back and add somebody.
Prosecutor.
Well, they all want more herald, they all say they're overworked, which I, I'm not judging either way, but. We're also with the budget.
This is probation.
Downstairs probation department. Not prosecutor. It's easy to get him.
Yeah, I think that's the word.
It's easy to get him.
Mixed up.
Mixed up. Yeah, this is probation that operates underneath.
Thing is, I'm, I'm saying, why, why such a large jump? From twenty five to twenty six.
I can't remember if he gave us a reason, we couldn't pay it out of probation.
No, we didn't even. Talk about it, I don't think.
Because. It would seem to me like it needs to be out of. Whatever that fund was. Because it's growing instead of shrink, most of our funds are shrink. Supplemental adult probation started with ninety eight, it's at a hundred and thirty seven now. It used fourteen thousand so far this year.
We pulled half of it out of there last year.
Oh, yeah.
He pulled thirty six out of there and put it into the probation. So what she did, put it all in one. So it was paid two ways before. Apparently it's been paid two ways again.
No, no, she took it off of here.
Zeroed out.
It's zeroed out here. Oh, I think there's a reason we can't.
No reason.
She zeroed it out, it put that. Right here, if you're looking on page one oh two. Probation officer.
I'm on page twenty one.
Okay, we'll go on up.
One oh two.
See their probation officer there, and then it's zeroed out.
Okay, alright, are you, are you saying move the entire fifty eight?
I'm guessing there's rules that says.
Probably to supplement the incomes. You probably can't do.
I would say you go back to thirty six, six ninety two. Exactly the same, fifty eight, four seventy three.
She did, she moved it, got collecting, she shut the one line item down and moved it up to here.
Yep. I'd say we move it back because the others not.
It has more in it. Is there a reason why we can't move it back?
It helps the suit can't come up with a reason. I'm sure we'll hear about it.
No, they don't.
So it'd be fifty eight.
No, go back to thirty six, six ninety two back there.
And twenty one seven.
There are zero percent for the state. So you're not required to give them any raise at all. I don't know if I asked Dave, I don't remember now, but it's, I should put raises on there.
Okay, then leave the. Other line on the twenty one, seven eighty.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the email that.
Accounts.
Okay.
Give them the raises.
Yeah, it's not gonna change nothing.
It's exactly the same, look at it. It's just not gonna be in the general. So we're taking out the thirty six. Out of the general, six ninety two. And putting it back over there with uh supplemental adult probation.
Yeah, I can decrease the general, but I can't increase the rebate, the supplemental until I have to do additional preparation.
For next year? Yeah, get it out of there. Who was another case manager, she's.
In the front one.
And who wears uniforms?
Uh, I think they have shirts, things like that.
Oh, okay.
And uh.
I think you're right, I think you're never seeing.
They need to have. There's some type of downstairs, they all need to be. Or badges with their name on it or something.
You don't wear yet.
You guys don't wear badges?
Prosecutor. Seventeen.
Across the street.
No one paid.
No rent due.
So she only off a supplies kick with everybody else?
No, I don't think she's kicked up that much, eighteen. I'd do eighteen hundred dollars, she's got a two thousand.
No, I mean, that money goes.
So hers is two point two nine percent. Which is mostly gonna be raises. Almost all, it is all stuff.
Well, if we go to a general office supplies account. She didn't increase anything. Two point five for raises, or what, would you, do you allow two point five?
I mean, twenty five was seventy nine thousand, this year seventy seven. I think I must have missed the minus on her.
That's why I said, if you can only get better, if the office supplies we go.
She has two different places, office supplies, two thousand dollars. And she got two different places. Yeah, two thousand eleven. On page ten. Then you go to the next page, two thousand eleven. Another two thousand. Where you looking at?
Yeah, it's listed twice.
For what?
Twice, office supplies.
Because, because she can let those. If she's working on four D stuff, they can pay for supplies. She can't pay for four, uh, four D stuff to just run her office. So they have kind of, yes, a percentage that makes everybody happy. So hard. Yeah, they could make a lot of things a lot easier.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, I say that, but apparently they can't because they've been doing that long time.
On the recorder.
Order was two seven. She's got a couple different places, she's got bonus stipends too.
Yeah, they're one of them.
She's taking that out of the other fund though.
Yeah, her and some of the funds.
One of them user fees or something. Perpetiation.
Perpetiation trial. Well, she makes them digitize everything in it.
Well, no, she can do whatever she wants to with it. And we, we don't have a save on, on the reported perpetuation trial. Now, why we do clerks and not them, I don't know, but the way it is.
She pays a part-time clerk. Out of there, but she pays her part-time help hour, uh, general fund.
Yeah, I think the. Yeah, because I think the.
Again, oh, okay, if they're working on perpetiation stuff, they can pay them out of here if they're. Filling in for reporter, it comes out the other.
But was the, was that they digitizing all the stuff?
I think.
Anything that. Perpetuates the record.
Yeah, yeah, so they did it.
And that's, that's what I had.
There's a lot of other stuff involved too that could be. When I was in there, I bought the, the camera, the big copier and then out of that. That's not the one or even now. I don't think it was the first one they ever had, but.
So we really can't do nothing with the recorder, right? Did we decide that?
No, there's nothing.
There's not much there to do with.
Yeah.
They only used one item.
Which one are you on, Jim?
Sheriff.
Okay. Same page.
Three thousand eighteen.
You went back to the sheriff now?
We're going forward, forward.
Okay, so we're done with that and we're into the sheriff.
Crazy.
Just think I'm.
Isn't that where he sends guys to the academy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He fit twenty, in twenty twenty-four, he used twenty thousand dollars. Twenty, twenty-five today. Fifty-nine, six and three. And he wants eleven thousand.
That's when he has new hires. It's not. It goes to the state academy.
He just said he was full staff.
Well, not many will be.
I thought he had, I thought he still had somebody needing to go.
Oh, well, to the academy?
I thought so, because they can be here.
A year.
A year.
Okay, for a year.
I thought he still had.
There's one in the current, so if I haven't got that bill yet, to add to that. That's probably two people more than the academy a year, I would think. As long as they're self, I think, but.
Are you a little different?
Eleven thousand, that's not.
Used five thousand for janitorial supplies, two thousand six dash sixteen. He's requesting ten thousand. Twenty-five.
Never know if he's dragging or dumping way ahead of him.
I can't keep on waiting.
He's got it all highlighted.
I have some highlighted, but he's a lot further ahead than me.
I can chase this highlighted.
I say eight thousand.
What line?
Uh, sixteen. Four, two thousand sixteen point one six.
Well, I mean. You'd think they'd use less. We don't have the inmates.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I say eight thousand, uh, seven thousand or eight thousand, not ten thousand. Uh, then line out of nineteen. I say zero.
So good. Line sixty.
Make five hundred dollars for lawn care. You got inmates.
So pay for one more.
You're going to seven or eight?
I thought I said seven.
Let's go seven.
Yeah, let's go seven. Gets more inmates and then come back and see it.
No lawn car, we're going to zero.
Yeah, lawn care.
Lawn care, zero.
I'd say that's mostly for taking care of the equipment, isn't it?
That's what the vehi, the maintenance is for, right, right above it. Or close to it.
We used sixty bucks this year.
It's just push my words. That's what they use.
Inmates.
I don't know, buy some really good push walkers.
I've not used any on water salt or salt this year.
Well, I think he stocked, he bought a bunch of them. Last year.
If you don't have the inmates going through there, you don't use a bunch of that. I mean, it all retracts.
Yeah.
And then the utilities is way down.
Yeah. Well, the utilities won't go down because everything still run, remains the same. I mean, you're.
Just the water.
Yeah.
I don't know if you had more bodies in there to take more cooling.
I was just looking. If you had the less bodies in there, it takes more heat.
I don't care if they're cold.
Oh, my god.
I forget how many BTU Jim may know that number.
Well, I don't care.
Yeah.
Twelve thousand per ton.
But when you're working on building a church, you gotta worry about how many.
People are in it.
People are in it and.
Eight hundred BTU per person. The, uh, four thousand point one one.
New equipment?
Zero.
I don't know what he's gonna buy.
Well, he's got all the trucks. He don't need to buy no trucks.
Well, that's back here somewhere else, isn't it?
There's patrol vehicle, sixty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I. I think we need to.
I would say that. Mostly for the vehicles. It could be radios.
No, this is.
No, there's radio stuff in here.
Four thousand point one one on page fifty-nine. It says patrol vehicle.
I think he's further.
Twenty-six.
I know, we're worried about.
Four thousand eleven says new equipment.
Four thousand, page.
Yeah, that says new equipment.
Yeah.
And that's the one you said you go to zero, right?
No, he's talking about.
No.
Okay, sorry.
Four thousand dollars, I'm not worried about that.
Okay. Yeah, you're gonna have to call out page numbers since you jumped. I like the way you move. I just need to get there with you.
I'm a little slow, you know, I'm old. You gotta give me a little more time to get there.
Did you get your back reworked like in the middle of the last meeting?
I just got my staples out today. Just took them out.
Okay, so now page fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Four thousand eleven, what are you saying?
Zero.
So why'd the communication officer one and two all of a sudden come into play now out of the, out of the general fund? There's a hundred thousand dollars there almost.
Yeah, Greg, last meeting. Because of the nine-one-one fund.
Unsustainable.
Moved into this with public safety.
Well, we could take out.
Yeah, I was making sure they.
Is that, everybody's with. Patrol vehicle going to zero. I mean, I think it's.
All it's used for.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's just kind of where we're at right now.
Where it's mainly where we're at. It's not that we don't want them to have some.
I still like the plan of keeping the equipment updated, but.
With this one calendar year, till the state figures out what they're gonna do, we're kind of. Honestly.
We cannot be. They can have a million dollars every year out of our. Little reserve we have. It don't go very long at a half a million dollars of time.
So are we doing four thousand eleven and four thousand twelve both to zero?
If well, he weren't some, what did he say?
Four thousand twelve would be actual equipment, not.
Pretty worth it.
You know, three thousand or fifty-five thousand.
A nine-one-one PSAP replacement. Estimated at forty-six to fifty-five thousand.
Nine-one-one what?
PSAP. Public safety, I don't know. You, Jonah may know what it stands for. PSAP replacement.
Through state.
Estimated forty-six to fifty-five thousand. It was moved from general fund to lit last time.
Yeah, okay.
Do the forty-six. And come back for additional appropriations.
If it's, then it would be coming out of general fund, right? Yeah, this is. This is at least out of lit.
Okay. He's got equipment again. They're on a different page. Uh, ninety-two.
Ninety-two? Well, there's equipment on page ninety-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was what was zeroed out.
Huh?
That was zeroed out. Cause that's where that PSAP equipment.
Okay.
Sorry, I said general, but it was nine-one-one.
Okay.
Okay, I just.
So it actually come out, uh, out of the nine-one-one fund?
Yeah, zeroed out in the nine-one-one and then put it in public safety lit.
Okay. That's what, yeah. What's unsolved maintenance, five thousand dollars?
I should know.
Looks like it called forty-nine and a half this year.
Yeah, for what? Is that water line breakages?
No, it's some kind of software.
I was gonna say, I'm saw, that sounds like a software. They're really dealing with water line breakage. Should have been a favorite of their insurance.
No, they have multiple water line breakages over there. It's all copper and they, they use ale top and cheddar bay pepper.
Yeah, but I mean, the one that happened here. Three months ago, four months ago.
Yeah, that was paid for insurance.
Or lack of progress.
Lack of.
Human error.
Says emergency notification system. It's all this.
Now hopefully it'll be everyone.
I wish it really. But man, it's fun to leave there to get the.
Oh, did we take that, uh, on page one forty-two? We took that to zero, right? Inmate expenses.
Hmm, booking fee.
Inmate expenses.
Yeah, inmate expenses.
No.
What is that?
Hmm, I think he said you can use that like he had to buy cots one time.
Well, you gotta got that in.
He hasn't used any.
There's.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, over twenty-five.
Everybody on that page one forty-two inmate expenses.
Wasn't, but when you start.
There's.
Or is that what he has in there from booking fee?
Um, yeah, it's called.
So can't really take that out.
There's nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty. Tips in there.
I do.
You do? Uh-uh, uh-uh, that's not mine. No. I'd change that immediately. I'd be out of my spring can. Here. They got thirty-five hundred for office supply here. That's my kid. Oh, I'm on. SWCD, yeah. Well, you were doing it, so I thought I'd try it.
That's what happens. The mama stays out too late. Give her try to find her.
I don't see nothing wrong there. Anybody else see it? Add one. FWCD.
Although your office supplies are pretty high.
This is where they split salaries on this one.
Yeah, but we were talking about earlier on the.
That was recording me.
I don't see anywhere.
So we're not doing anything for twenty?
I didn't see. Anybody else seen her? Yeah. Anybody?
Come on, Ryan.
They're on a. What tab?
Well, I don't have a tab twenty-one.
He's on twenty-one, thirty-five hundred dollar office supplies.
I don't, yeah, I wonder about that.
Do they do anything for the, um. Yeah, that's it.
I see.
At the same time.
What, that is. With twenty-four and twenty-three, they use over four.
Yeah, they're both over forty-seven hundred dollars.
They're really.
So, soil and water.
On page, uh, tab twenty, on the office supplies.
Remember she came in, she said she'd never done a budget before and she didn't know and she was okay if we cut it because it's just her. She didn't.
At twenty-three, they use forty-five and twenty-four, they use forty-two, so.
Right, which we.
But she wasn't there.
She requested five, we cut it back to thirty.
Thirty-five, yeah.
We're actually cutting that less than what they've been spending, so. I don't think there's anything else to adjust.
Yeah, she's.
Good? And this is the smallest tourism budget I've ever seen in my life.
Most black. We have your tourism president, so I would say that could be changed. What's the deal with the?
Cell phones on the server.
We've asked to have wifi to run his.
Hotspots and stuff.
Yeah, to run his little box.
And he went to all cell phone instead of office instead of mileage because. He can't stand tracking mileage.
Yeah.
And when they, they really got in depth, they had to pull it up on the computer and send pictures and. It got pretty ugly.
And so he said he'd rather just do the cell phones and forget the mileage. So you'll see he don't have any mileage.
Yeah, there's nothing on that.
And they're using their vehicles all the time. I mean.
Really, that's probably a huge savings for the carry. Miles can get.
Well, I assume somebody, yeah, that's.
Fifteen, hundred miles a day.
Insurance, yes.
I, I assumed it was. So that tourism budget will keep going up. Because I.
Hopefully.
If I understand right, they got some of them things behind singing hill open for business, I think.
Yeah.
At least the way I read it on Facebook, they was open for. The things behind singing.
So the tourism money comes from.
What are the things?
It's, it's like an Airbnb.
Oh. Several.
I'll send you an invite to their page, I can't adventure or something, I can't remember what it is. Poff Construction walk ground down about three miles into the county. And they built, they're building Airbnbs on this mountainside.
Oh, wow.
Build four? He's only do four right away and he was trying to get us to help him, but we couldn't do much with the redevelopment.
But they're. Part of them are supposed to be open, they're gonna have asanas, they're gonna have.
Redevelopments pay for the road up there.
Wow. They was already committed to the project.
Yeah, we could, he, he was.
He didn't come see you before.
No, it was.
They, they was already doing.
Yeah, he.
And then they got the big house between, between Panhandle and the top of the hill, they got that big house.
So every time he rents.
Think that was the first thing they updated.
We have a, is it six or seven percent?
I don't remember.
Thing keeper's tax is where that money comes from.
Well. But if you rent the people, it's going to the casino and stuff.
So the, the people who are honest and they're booked through an online agency, we get that money back if somebody don't. Like if Jim has a house, he just rents out of myself and I don't turn it in that set, collect that seven percent, we lose it.
But any Airbnb or what's the other one?
The.
Or both.
The.
Both, if you sign up to them, you are paying all of the taxes. Oh, wow. And I think that's what they was doing with those.
Yeah.
So. And the same thing with uh.
Edros.
Edros.
Yeah.
His little cabins that he's doing.
Yeah, but it, oh, he only has the one Airbnb.
Oh, no. No, he's got three, three of them now. Yeah, he's. Airbnbs, yeah, most is tiny houses.
I thought they were gonna be tiny houses.
Our cabins over at the lake, we pay.
Oh, there was at the lake too, right?
Is that Martin? Yeah, that's still Martin.
That's all Martin.
So, yeah, that's where the money comes from.
If you can rent it for two or three days a week and bring in more than you can bring in musically. Wow, I didn't know about the thing at singing hill.
Yeah.
So to actually get in there, you go, when you go up the hill, you go in that very first drive at singing hill in between them two old houses. Oh, really? That is part of the singing hill property.
At the top of the hill, right?
Yeah, right at the top of the hill.
Oh, so you don't go through Panhandle, right?
No, no, you go in between them houses. As they were there.
Is it paved road or gravel?
Grab the ground.
There's a little barn, real old barn, you kinda go around and it goes back there and they're on a ridge. It's really pretty setting.
Wow, I'll have to drive back there. But anyhow, I don't know how many is open, but according to Facebook.
He had two. He had two of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then they're putting in, if they're still going with the plan, they told us they're putting in campsites for RVs.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
They had twelve?
I was gonna say, that may have been my nine I was thinking about, but yeah.
They had several campsites, they go open it too.
Golly, that's cool, but again, in, in phases, I mean, if it goes. Now, can you do that? Grow, if it don't, it won't. Can you put in campsites and put them under? The same thing?
They were doing subjects.
Airbnb? I thought so. Well, I thought it was some type of thing.
He had all the subjects drawn out, who uh, it was neat.
That is cool. Was it sweetie?
Is that the commissioners that did this? The. Battery service officers, rather, five thousand dollar raise?
Who was that? Are you talking about who? They're trying to raise, it's, it's same.
Between twenty-four and twenty-five, got a almost ten thousand dollar raise, so yeah, they did it last year. Trying to get somebody in there. So this year it's only two point five percent.
Still. Eight, to do all those deals and eight workplaces paid, what he has to deal with, I'll be making more.
I think we owe it to the veterans.
Yeah, around the old man over there is just.
Biting his teeth.
Biting his teeth. Yeah. It's a thankless job, I'm sure, and you get people that work with you, you get people that question.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, Jim may wanna take his job. When he quits the council, he goes.
I don't think so.
Let me think about it, nah.
Thought processing over.
You didn't think about that very long, he didn't. He kinda stopped that really quick. So we're going twenty-six?
I'm done.
What's unappropriated expenses?
Oh, I was just giving.
Nothing in it anyway.
Okay, it's zeroed out.
Yeah, this is all due.
Wait a minute, it's zeroed out, but it shows a bottom line of line. Way up there.
Yeah, that's the total of all them.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's really curious somewhat the ambulance, everything we're gonna lose out of the move, through the ambulance.
Yeah.
Exactly what it's gonna wipe out. Being from health insurance to perf, the.
Salaries.
Sergeant.
That's the only thing we are gonna lose. When you have a. Nine eighty budget. We're paying out.
We have some salaries in the commissioners.
But there's numbers all over the bud. You're three different.
Two different.
Have they figured that out?
No.
No?
Try to Dave and Hall, and they're sure to be sending us the uh contract. To review before they.
I thought we were gonna hold a special session for that.
I requested it and it was taught, like, they were okay with sharing it with us, but he was like. At least if we don't do a special session, then that. They'd send us the contract to review before that.
That was my. Position was trying to do, they was moving along and we could never.
And what about the one?
Four of us there together. I said we could never get everybody lined up together. The commissioner. At that time, I mean, then we're done the next one, I mean, cancel.
Well, we still have one to do for the insurance.
Remember, so might.
It'll do, like, can we not do them both at the same time?
Well, it depends, I mean, if they have the contract down and if the insurance is.
Well, they pretty much said they're gonna go with it. The problem with.
You know, the, the thing about the insurance company, they'll wait until the very last day.
Yeah, right.
And then hit you with seventeen percent or fifteen percent, then you're there expecting to pay it. Well, if they do that to us, why don't we just? Find another insurance company?
I think the reason's cause it ain't easy. To find them.
Nothing's easy. I'm just saying, if he's gonna hit another fifteen or seventeen percent.
Are they still s- talking about switching plans up again?
I haven't heard plans, I heard maybe offering.
I mean, uh, the, the.
Of the agent?
No, the health savings account.
Yeah, maybe doing.
Cause if it keeps going up, we're gonna have to change back to that, that's all there is doing. Cause we're. Gonna be. Well, we're getting close to where we was twenty years ago. And that's just too big a percentage as a budget.
Yeah, I'm not even sure there's enough budgeted in here after. I know. Brought it to me that, um, let me pull it up.
I think we had seven fifty, don't we?
Yeah, but.
That's what it was last year.
Yeah, it's the first in January, it was like forty-six thousand, sorry, I hadn't pulled up my computers.
Maybe I just.
Every year.
You might have a good total of two and a half percent, I don't know, raises. Probably it's out to. Up to pad.
I did, I think it was sixty, sixty-one thousand in general fund.
I think we wanna cut that.
No. I don't think we'll be able to.
Hopefully. Hopefully the state figures out some things and. But I'm not very hopeful.
Even if we'd like to raise and raise the. Let's raise it to five. And then raise the deductible on the insurance. They're gonna, they'll balance out and they'll walk out. So I don't sense them doing neither one.
The two, two and a half wouldn't make up for the.
No.
Ten percent.
Not for a family, an individual might, might have a good sick.
Yeah.
Like, you know, all those guys that never rode a doctor, that'd be the way they gain. If you use the insurance, yeah.
It's better to go to the doctor and get checked up than go in the back of a ambulance. Person. Lot cheaper.
The insurance, beginning of the year started out about forty-nine thousand. The last bill. She paid for October. Um. Let's see. Sixty-five thousand. Um. It's just, it's gone up even this year, the people going on insurance and.
That's a month.
Yeah. So she just told me this week, well, maybe last week, that we're not gonna have enough even in budget to finish the year, we're gonna have to move around some.
At seven, eight.
Like the maintenance contracts line or, you know.
Yeah, that's surprising. I like this time chain.
So, yeah, I don't have enough in there for next year then. Did it raise fifteen percent?
Sure, write down Atlas Views Resort.
I'm sorry?
Write down Atlas Views Resort on Facebook.
Atlas what?
Views.
That's hilarious, nearly nine hundred thousand.
That's that place, that works for the shake.
So everything we use.
Nine, nine, nine hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Was there fifteen percent of nine nine eight nine seven?
Right. Or catastrophing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a couple catastrophes.
You don't have. Yeah, I really think that those places would really be a go over there with French like people coming to the casino. A lot of people never stayed in the country. They don't know what it's like to be in the country.
Are we during that or?
Are we done? The first level, you think we got everything? Wonder if we done anything.
What we.
Did.
Yeah.
We didn't know the needle much.
What we did, the insurance took care of.
Uh, yeah, exactly.
Or gonna take care of.
Hey, what we did was we checked and verified.
We might be surprised, they might. Remain the same.
That'd be nice, wouldn't it?
I think the state can improve our budget too.
Yeah.
You really think, half million dollars. Either what, the fuel, they idle out in the vehicles, just sitting around idling in the city being apples.
No.
Marion County, they waste that much fuel a day.
Yeah.
Here we are struggling for a half million dollars to make our budget work.
Mm-hmm.
That's crap. You know, they have all the people, we have all the scenery, we should get a little bit of money to help keep the scenery looking nice. Have decent old drive down city.
So I don't think they care about us either.
We're not producing income for them.
Does anybody wanna make a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
I second. Oh, we did wake up. All in favor.
That's all we have, why, why your motion is for?
Jern, you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle. Again. Now she'll be sending us emails all night.
Yeah, I'm still working on these. I didn't, department budget meeting minutes, I didn't get ready for you, but. Twelve pages.
Is there much on the commissary? Stuff tomorrow?
No, Dave won't be there either, so should be. Fast one.
Well, we don't pay him nothing.
No.
For what he does, I mean, he puts a lot of time in here.
We pay him ten percent of what we would pay a real lawyer.
I mean, if I was gonna give a raise, I'd be giving it to him. Because I think he goes above and beyond.